I'm happy with it.
Good evening. Hi, call the August tenth, two thousand twenty-three Bremerton City Council Study Session to Order. This study session is open for the public to listen in, but there'll be no opportunities for input. The content of these items is subject to change and no action is anticipated. If approved by council, these items will be placed on the August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two City Council Meeting Agenda. All right, our first item, Mayor Wheeler has present the confirmation appointment of Vanessa C. Erto. Hopefully, I got that right and we can be corrected to the Bremerton Kitsap Access Television. Mayor Wheeler.
All right. All right. Good evening, Council, Council President. So she, I'm very pleased to present to you Vanessa for appointment to the BCAT Citizens Advisory Committee. So she has been, it was a very tough choice and but working with the Department Head over at BCAT, we've committed agreement. She's going to be the our pick. So.
Right. And and sounds good. Any questions for the mayor on this? Seems pretty straightforward. Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to say I looked over the application. She's lived here, you know, twenty plus years, heavily involved in the city. Great write-up about getting involved in the community and in doing some diversity inclusion outreach as well. So seems like an excellent victory. Thanks, Mayor. Denise?
I've interacted with Vanessa in many different roles and I've always found her to be professional, warm, very knowledgeable. She, man, she doesn't sweat the small stuff. She's, she's able to, her countenance and everything is able to get her through anything. So I'm really, I'm thrilled with this selection, Mayor.
All right. If there's no objections, that will be on the consent agenda. Next is Public Works Operations Manager, Dave Carter, to present the Public Works Agreement with Intermountain Slurry Seal Incorporated for the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four unit price contract for the preservation of city streets by chip seal and or slurry seal project. Take it away, Dave.
Good afternoon, Council. So yes, that's exactly right. I have Public Works Agreement with Intermountain Slurry Seal for the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four unit price contract for the preservation of city streets by chip seal and or slurry seal. This is a annual program pavement preservation using chip seal or slurry seal in the bids work each year. However, for the two thousand twenty-two, we have prepared a unit price contract that falls RCW thirty-five dot twenty-two dot six twenty. Using this approach, we'll, we hope to award a three-year contract that establishes the unit price of each materials to be incorporated in the work and will execute annual task orders or work orders that define the roads to be preserved. The two thousand twenty-two work is generally located in the West Bremerton area, as shown in the attached figure. The project was competitively bid. Two bids were received. Intermountain Slurry Seal Incorporated was the lowest responsive responsible bidder at one point six eight four million dollars over the three-year contract. Each year, because this is a unit price contract, each year, the, the contract can be tailored to the budget for that year. So it's a, it's a really good deal that way. That's about all I have. If anybody has any questions.
All right. Any questions? All right, Jeff.
Sure. I know we reviewed this in Public Works, but it was the other month. So the, the map that's in the packet, Dave, that's everything that's expected to get done over the following three years?
No, 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 that's, that's just this year. Each year, yeah, each year, probably in late December, early January, will come up the, with the scope for the following year.
Okay. And that's identified just based on the current condition of the roads that you have in the database, or is there any?
That's exactly right. Yes.
Okay. So this is the word, like the worst areas first?
I wouldn't say it's the worst area, excuse me. I wouldn't say it's the worst area first. It's one of the areas that, that the streets have, have been identified that would accommodate a chip seal or slurry seal. And, and we, we stuck to a, a small general area for efficiency. We don't want the contractors spread out throughout the city on one contract year. We want to focus in one area for the stockpile and materials for, for the efficiency of their process.
Okay, that makes sense. And I got it that, but, but what I remember from Public Works meeting with a, but doing the unit price, it's basically just a a more efficient way to contract out this work and we know exactly how much it's going to cost and we can kind of adjust the, the scope a little more efficiently than, than the past. Is that right?
That is true. It, it saves a lot of administrative time due to the fact that we're not going out to bid every year. We, we're, we're in a three-year contract with the possibility of a fourth year at our discretion. And it's just a simple task order or work order that gives them the, the work directive for that year.
Perfect. Last, last question I wrote down was, uh, is this, is this coming from the residential street fund or what kind of pot of money is this coming from?
Yeah, it's, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand is the total budget amount. Five hundred thousand comes from residential and it is for residential, excuse me, and a hundred and fifty thousand is for classified.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was that last word?
A hundred and fifty thousand is for classified streets.
Oh, gotcha. Classified, classified as an arterial or something else. Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, for a second, I'm like, sorry, the street is classified, can't talk about it. All right. Well, that's all I got. Thanks so much, Dave.
You're welcome.
Director Nucky?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on a little bit to the comment about what streets are appropriate for treatment using chip seal and, and slurry seal. There's, um, different degradation in streets makes it appropriate for a different type of treatment. And so streets that are in really good and excellent shape, they, they need either no treatment or maybe they need a little bit of crack sealing or something like that. And then as they degrade a little bit further, then chip seal or slurry seal is really appropriate. And so what chip seal does is it reestablishes a wearing surface on the roadway. And also, since you're putting an emulsion over the top, you know, asphalt that has had a lot of the oils in it that have either evaporated away or worn away, weathered away, it'll reestablish that. So it'll reestablish that surface. It's not a structural repair at all, but it does provide a wearing surface. And then as roads degrade further and further, you end up into larger grades of, larger, more significant types of restoration all the way up to, you know, reconstruction. But when you said worst first, that kind of, oh, I can need to speak to that because it's not that. It's the appropriate treatment for the pavement in that, that condition. And, and that's something where it has, you're, you are reestablishing the, the wearing surface and you're really putting an emulsion back over the roadway to reestablish the oils to help preserve the roadway.
Okay, Anna. Nope, mute.
Perhaps if we are on Zoom for a little while longer, I will master that. So I have a few questions about this. Chip seal is appropriate for local access and minor collectors? Or is it up one notch? I think minor feeder road is above the minor collector.
Yeah. It's appropriate for a, a multitude of roads. But the, the condition of the road is, is more appropriate when evaluating whether it gets a kit seal or a slurry seal or not.
Okay. So like even an arterial?
Sometimes, yes.
Okay. And then just moving on to everyone on council has been subjected to my series of home slides of the pavement analysis report, what I think you guys call the IMS study from two thousand eighteen. And so I'm, I'm looking at some of the results from that. And I, I'm not fully understanding what we have here. Because, for example, you're doing Taft from nineteenth to twentieth. If you guys look on your map, it's that Cambrian Lafayette Peninsula on the east side. It's kind of a U shape with a, a projection sticking out of the top. And the analysis report shows both Rainier and Taft are in very good condition already. So I was wondering why they're getting additional chips here. I'm truly wondering it. I'm, I just, because I don't understand.
So to be honest with you, the, a lot of the scope for this project comes from our engineering division. So I, I know I'm passing the buck here when I say that. But somehow they've evaluated the IMS study. They've done an onsite observation and they've determined that this is a good, a good candidate for a slurry seal or a chip seal.
Yeah, let's get Director Nucky to comment on that.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I wish Shane was here because he could speak to this a lot better than I can. But the IMS data is one data point that's used in identifying appropriate roadways, right? So, yeah, there definitely is engineering judgment that also went into the street selection. And like Dave indicated, the engineering division, those are the folks that actually really did a lot of the heavy lift in identifying the appropriate roadways to include in any given year. Ned turned his camera on, so I'm wondering if, if you have anything to add to that.
Not really. I have, I wasn't involved in the prioritization for the chip seal, but I do know that Shane and Chris, like, they work on that every year and they work with operations to come up with the priorities. And we do try to group it in a localized area. So it may have been, those were the roads that were most appropriate to stay in that localized area. So we're efficient spending the money and, and for the construction process. But beyond that, I would have to, like, dig in with Shane and Chris and find out what the actual justification was to prioritize that section of roadway. So.
Well, that's something I think would be useful for us to understand as well, because Jeff Coughlin made the natural assumption that, you know, we're doing the worst roads first and then the least worst and so forth and so on. Callow Avenue between fifteenth and, what is it, twenty-second, twenty-fourth is dark orange, which means it's in poor condition. And, you know, just as a layperson would have seemed to me a better candidate than a road that's in very good condition. And I, here, I'm making an uninformed conclusion that a road that's in very good condition will degrade less over four years than a road that's in poor condition. So I, I'm just making that assumption. And if it's wrong, hit me.
So the, David, you don't mind, let me just jump in on that. So it really, it, it's the appropriate treatment for the roadway at the, the point in the degradation curve that the road exists. And again, Shane could speak to this a lot better than I can. But when a road is in poor condition, and I, and the, the section of road that you mentioned, I'd have to go look at it to really identify what treatment is appropriate at that location. But when a road has deteriorated past a certain point, it's not really a candidate for chip seal anymore. And it really requires a more significant, you know, treatment such as, like, an overlay or, you know, patch, a significant patching and an overlay, something like that, right? And, and chip seals isn't used for concrete. And I, I, I don't think Cal is, you know, that, that part of Cal is concrete, but that's also a consideration. There's actually quite a few considerations that go into where this is the appropriate treatment. And I'd also like to say that just because a roadway doesn't exist on this map, that doesn't mean that it's not a candidate for chip seal. It's just the candidate that was selected for the first year. And again, this is a three, likely a four-year contract. And, and we have an ongoing contract in our CIP. We intend to do this every single year. And I'm super excited actually about this being a unit price contract, because I think it's going to make us much more efficient. And you can see that we got a great bid compared to the other, the other bidder that has done work for us. And they've done great work too. So.
I think it's a great bid and a great process. I really do. I think any contractor will more willingly bid on a three-year contract than on a one-year contract with no hope of renewal. I think this is a smart idea and I think this is proceeding intelligently. I'm just, it's my job to represent my district, so I'm just asking these questions for them. That's really it. So like here in, in what you guys call the IMS study, like, what would be, like, would a marginal street be appropriate for chip seal? Would a poor street be appropriate for chip seal?
So you, you're asking
along with all together.
There's a, there's a more significant discussion that needs to take place to identify and to really speak to what is the appropriate treatment for a roadway during its life cycle? And, and, and we're not really prepared to speak to that right now. Really, we're kind of focused on the roads that were selected for this, the, for this contract. But I, we definitely need to have that conversation. I'm working on a presentation that will cover that. But that is a, that's a much broader conversation.
It's hot. It's August. I appeal to the rest of the council. This is something that I could happily ask questions about for, like, quite a while. But I appeal to the rest of the council. Would you prefer to defer this discussion to some future date when Shane and, shoot, I can't remember the other person's name, are both available? Can we schedule such a session in the future?
I mean, we were getting a little bit into the weeds. So tonight
That's, yeah.
is really about this contract. Is it a fair price? Is it do what we need? And I, I think we've got confidence in the decision-making that the department's doing. But I think it's always good to learn some more details. So maybe Director Nucky can work with Shane, either just send out some more information and we'll kind of go from there and see if we need to schedule an actual presentation or if we just need to, you know, kind of work on educating everybody. So.
Okay. Can I make one final comment, Michael?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Let's see another hand or it went down. So. All right. So the one question I, this may be more for, well, if anybody can answer questions. But Director Nucky referred to what a great deal this is. And I don't know if you guys use to buy one, get one coupon or a half-price coupon. But that kind of price difference makes me a little nervous, like you guys have full confidence that in this company and the prices and stuff like that. So.
We do have full confidence. They actually came in right at our engineer's estimate.
Yeah.
Not really sure why the other contractor came in so high. But we're very happy with this, with this bid.
Good, good. All right. That sounds good. How would we like to treat this? Is consent okay? I'm seeing a lot of north-souths. Consent it is. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Managing Engineer Bill Davis here to present on the Public Works Agreement with Nova Contracting Incorporated for the Well Nine R Site Project Development Project. Mr. Davis?
Good evening, Bremerton City Council. I'm here to talk about a word of the contract for Nova, award to Nova Contracting for development of the site. Kelly, could you pull up the map here? I wanted to give you a little bit of background on the Bremerton Wells. The Well Nine site you can see is located pretty far north there, almost near Wogaway. Our water system extends that far north. We also have wells that are located in the south, Anderson Creek, kind of on the Port Otter side of Gorst. Also some near, some in Gorst as well as some out in the golf course. Okay, you can stop sharing. So that well that's located up there, the, the Well Nine site, there was a well there that was abandoned in two thousand ten. It was creating sand. So what we have a need as a city to, there's, due to growth and the, the difficulty of getting new water rights on properties, it's, we're using an existing site to develop the new well. So we have to prepare that site in order to drill the new well. And the type of method that we're using, mud rotary method, requires a larger site. So this, this is to grade the site, create some walls, remove approximately six trees and demolish a building so that we can create a level area to put the drill rig, the mud, the mud tanks and the equipment truck. So we've been working with our hydrogeologist and the development engineer, a design engineer, we've come up with, with this design. And then you, you're going to see at some point in the future, a separate contract for the actual well drilling later this year. So we sent out this cost proposal to contractors on the MRSC Small Works roster. We got four bids. Nova Contractor, Nova Contracting, who we've worked with before, was the, provided the low-cost proposal for this contract. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Jeff?
A quick one, if I remember from Public Works, this basically helps us retain our water rights up there as well by getting this well rebuilt. Is that correct?
Yes. You know, the water rights are on specific pieces of property within specific areas. And to get new water rights, it's very difficult these days. It could take up to, you know, five to 10 years to get water rights at a new site. So we're using this site as the best we can in order to develop, to put another new well.
Perfect. That's it.
All right. How would we like to treat this? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Consent it is. All right. Thank you. Next is, I'd like to invite Public Safety Committee Chair Jennifer Chamberlain to provide a summary of the highlights of the last meeting.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. I just kind of looking at my notes. We, you know, the budget's on everybody's mind now. So both police and fire wanted to give us a little update on some budget requests they're going to be making. One of the budget requests coming up is from the Police Department. It has to do with, they, they want to increase their fee for reduction requests. And that has to do with the new technology of body cameras and in being in compliance. And it's, there's, there's a lot involved in that. So you may be requesting that. Fire Department had their one hundred and twentieth birthday. Happy birthday, Fire Department. I was, I was by myself at the, at the Public Safety Committee meeting. It was a very small meeting. So what we still, we, we had a couple of things to talk about. And then for legal, the update for legal, they're going to go, they're going to finally go into a cloud-based case management system. Welcome to the twentieth century, right? And so, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, all the upcoming changes and the demand on that's going to be coming for the therapeutic court, which actually, even though there's allocation for, for FTE in that, it's still going to put a burden on the already heavily burdened prosecutor's office because they are going to have to onboard and train. And so, and then deal with a, a whole new, you know, system. And so while we were talking about that, police Chief Wolf threw down some major props to our prosecutor's office for all that they do and all that they handle. I was really impressed with, with the, with the way that our prosecutor was talking. Some of the terms he used included like a harm reduction atmosphere. And so they, I appreciated that. Um, let's see, we, I, since there were, there, we didn't have a full committee. So we didn't really go much into the standing agenda item of the fireworks ordinance. And so next meeting, we'll have a more robust discussion about what that really means, which really is just kind of, you know, trying to do some problem solving and getting ahead of the game for next year. Other than that, that's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I just want to remind folks that there is a public facilities tour tomorrow on Thursday, August eleventh, and we'll be meeting eight AM at the Public Works Oyster Bay Facility in the north parking lot. And I'll hopefully, my sense of direction will kick in at that time and figure out which way north is. Denise?
I just wanted to formally let Director Nucky and the Public Works staff know that I'm, I'm truly disappointed and sad that I can't attend tomorrow. Michael tried to, President Goodnow tried to entice me just come part of the day, said the first part is the dam. And of course, I've been to the dam and I'd love to go to the dam again. It's spectacular. That's why I'm such a strong advocate of keeping our waters safe. And so have fun tomorrow, everybody. I'm with you in spirit and forgive me. And Tom, that probably just means my learning curve is not gonna improve quite as quickly as everybody else's. But I hope you forgive me for any future needs when you, when you, you know, think, boy, if she'd been on that Public Works tour, she wouldn't be asking this question. So forgive me.
Well, you'll be missed. All right, Anna.
Thank you, Michael. Um, just a couple of housekeeping things.
Is this about the tour?
Not about the tour.
Okay, then you're going to hold until I ask for good of the order. Okay?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought we were there.
No worries. We're almost, we're getting there. So we also have an invitation from Naval Base Kitsap Commanding Officer to or Naval Base Kitsap Bremerton, which also included PSNS, that I believe, into the, even the CIA area, which is the controlled industrial area, which is, you know, even when I was active duty military, you know, required special access to get into. So we have to pick a date. You know how good we are at nailing down dates. So what I need to know is, what I would like to do is just go through the five days of the week. And just to try to find out if there's some days that are better than others, then we'll look at the calendar and we will see if we can send out a little bit of a survey or something to do that. Jennifer, do you have something?
Will we also be aligning this with our photo?
Well, if, if we could ever get seven people together at the same time, we will. But I don't know if everybody plans to attend this. Or I don't know if Eric and Denise would want to meet us at eight o'clock in the morning tomorrow just for a photo. Oh, we don't have a photographer. Let me, we'll have to be, like, my arm's not long enough for that.
Y'all aren't going to be dressed for
I could possibly get a photographer, but okay.
If you're going to the dam, you're not going to be dressed for a photo.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be a, a damn good time. So we'll, Bonnie, we will, yeah. So real quick, let's see, just, how do I want to do this? Yeah. So I'm going to actually just have you put your hand up if in general, like, I'm going to go through the days, but that day is bad for you. So if in general, a Monday is bad. Okay. Tuesday. Wednesday, which is tough because it's council. So Thursday. Friday.
So Michael, your question's quite difficult for me to answer because I don't know what week you're talking.
Well, that's what, what I was hoping to do is then, just in general.
So I travel on a weekly basis. So on any given week, I'm gone for the entire week.
All right. Lori says that Thursdays usually work best with advanced planning. Denise, could you accommodate it?
Yeah. And, you know, I, I can probably get by a little bit more because my granddaughter's going off to preschool and my grandson is in elementary and they'll be starting back into school. But my adventure day with them, you know, every week is Thursday. And
Yeah.
So, so, but I think with advanced planning, you know, I can manage that with them.
Yeah.
They're tough negotiators.
Because obviously we need to get the command. Because obviously we need to get the commanding officer of of NBK. Commanding officer of the shipyard and probably the um director of the shipyard, um.
Kathy, I really want to do this. I really want to do this. So I'll bend over backwards, you know.
Available Thursdays, that's um unless it's in the morning.
You are or not?
Only in the mornings on Thursdays.
But but when you say morning, do you mean noon?
I would need to be done by noon.
We could probably make that happen, couldn't we?
I don't
They start early over there.
I'm trying to think what the last tour felt like.
So I was on the tour. You and I were both on the tour last time, Michael. It's an all-day event. So they take us to lunch and everything and you don't want to wear formal wear. It's gonna be somewhat warm. We're gonna ride around a bus and it sounds like this tour's been expanded. So uh, and last time we took a tour of a submarine, if I recall correctly. And in addition to the facilities, it's a really good event, um but it's an all-day event.
And it would also, well, it really just depends on the week. Um, if it's a week where I have a committee meeting on a Thursday, then I'm good to go as long as I can be back for the committee meeting, because I don't have market that day. Other Thursdays, I go to Bremerton Farmers Market for my work. So that's that first Thursday.
What committee meetings?
First and second Thursdays of the month, I have committee meetings. And so as long as I can be done for those committee meetings. One of them's at four o'clock.
Okay.
First and second Thursdays are are just fine.
All right, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna start with some Thursdays, but again, we need to ask the shipyard for their availability to host us uh and then um we will move from there, so um
Can I?
We'll try to pick something far enough that if somebody needs to make uh any kind of arrangements, they can. Um, hold on, Quinn.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm in Seattle on Tuesdays, but with enough advance notice, I can, I can just take uh vacation time, so.
Okay.
You mean Thursdays? Sorry.
Anna.
So um Jeff, do you have any Mondays off or or are are all Mondays all day locked solid? Because you are the only person for whom Monday was bad.
So yeah, my main constraint is just obviously childcare for Max, so Nick can usually work from home with enough advance notice. I just know Mondays and Tuesdays are usually the roughest for him, but I I can always see if we pick out a particular Monday.
All right, we um
Is Monday okay for everyone else?
Yeah, it ju- it just sounds like Lori needs to, Lori and Mike, you know, you kind of know the we've all said we can make accommodation uh with enough notice, I think for every day.
We'll kind of start with Mondays and Thursdays, see what's available, and we'll bring those actual dates back. And uh uh Lori will probably send emails so if you can quickly respond to those um and um uh, yeah, so um I I don't want to be in a position where we're leaving somebody out, but um, you know, we have to, we have to schedule what their, what their availability is, okay? All right, and now uh any other input or announcements for the good of the order? And Anna, you had your hand up earlier if you'd like to go.
It's really just a housekeeping thing, a couple of things. Um, the first is it would be really great if we could get business cards with our actual council address printed on it. Um, because often there's like a time lag between when Lori receives the email and then I receive the email. So that's about as minor a housekeeping thing as I can think of. And then the other thing that I would like counsel to consider is having Lori and Christine actually appear in front of us and tell us what all they do all day. Because it's pretty flipping impressive. So I'd like it if we could schedule that for some future study session. Probably won't be as light as this one, but some session that is light, so that I just think that it would be a good thing for us to do. That's it.
That sounds good. Um, you you're welcome to give out your your uh email address. Or just what I would do in this case is to just say, oh, you can just use my first name where it says city and my last name where it says council. But to be honest, one of the reasons is so that staff can back you up when there is a records request and things like that. So um it's, 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 it's the best case and um so it's, it's, but part of it is the way it's always been done and there's reasons behind it. Uh Jeff.
Perfect, got, carried the meeting too short, got three items, too really quick, and the other one will just be a couple minutes. Um, I attended as Audit Committee Chair, um, the State Audit Entrance Conference on August fourth. So this is the state coming in and auditing the city that they do every year. Um, so just a heads up to council that they're all, they're doing the regular audit. Um, and as well, federal grant compliance audit, so they're focusing on our our highway planning and construction cluster and COVID nineteen uh local fiscal recovery funds. Um, all all routine, but just a heads up that audits going on and then they'll have an exit conference where they brief us on what they found and any recommendations. So that's, that's coming down the pipe. Uh, number two was I attended um Puget Sound Regional Regional Council had a webinar at the end of July regarding the bipartisan infrastructure law and kind of how that money flows down to local governments. Um, there was a lot of information. My main takeaway is there's obviously something for everything, but you know, especially like bridges and tunnels. Um, they had a really good slide deck. They said they'd send out. I I didn't see it in my inbox, so I just sent them a quick request today to see if they can share that. Um, one of those meetings that, you know, could have been an email to that slide deck was so great. So once I get that all forwarded on to folks, because I found it really informative. Um, and the last item, uh just a couple of minutes is that I just wanted to brief the council. Um, I think I, at least I know Michael and Eric now. I've been attending a local group um for about the past nine months with my council hat on. It's called the Alliance for Equitable Healthcare. And it's a group of selected officials, um officials from the Kitsap Public Health District. Um, just some local doctors and nurses and kind of community activists. And so the main concern of the group has been kind of a a growing monopoly um on healthcare in our region. Um, obviously locally, the kind of closer of Harrison Hospital. Um, but partially, mostly just just a lack of services. And especially that that local monopoly doesn't offer all services that are legally available in Washington State. Obviously, most important women's uh healthcare and and the life care. And so the main goal of the group is really to kind of ways, raise awareness and then just look for any solutions or incentives um that we can enact to kind of bring in um healthcare from other groups, everything from just, you know, individual primary care doctors all the way up to, you know, things that would take a long time, like new urgent care or or hospitals. Um, and it was, it was good to see, if you didn't see the article on Kitsap Sunday the other day, it sounds like we will be getting a urgent care emergency room on on Kitsap Way, so fantastic, but you know, still, there's still the concern that again, all those legally available services are not provided by one organization. Um, so the the heads up here is just part of my role. I reached out to the government liaisons at UW Medicine and Multi Care, which are kind of the two regional organizations, you know, the group thought most likely to come into Kitsap and Bremerton. And so I had a good meeting with each, the liaisons looped in some kind of regional directors and planners. Um, and you know, just to make it clear, I said, I'm just an individual council person, just you know, looking to see if there's anything I can do myself. I'm not speaking on behalf of the city or anything like that, um which they're they're used to. And so the final end here is that uh I said I'd pass back this information to you all. So so multi-care is probably the most involved in the region of the two. Um, they are expanding a lot of home health and hospice care and virtual care, kind of meeting people where they're at. Um, they highlighted they have these Indigo Urgent Carers. I think the closest one's in Paul's boat. It's fairly new. And then you have maternal fetal medicine clinics, uh with the closest, closest one's growing in Tacoma. Um, they're starting to partner with the, with both the tribes, the Skoll and the Skollis tribes, and they have a partnership with uh Peninsula Community Health Services. And they're, they're definitely keeping an eye on Bremerton. Um, they noted, you know, as we know, well, a particular need for mental health services in the area. Um, sounds like they got a couple of things in the pipe to stay tuned on maybe in the next month or two, so um that was good to hear. And then University of Washington Health has a a smaller presence over here. Um, but a neat takeaway is that they just volunteered themselves to do a needs assessment of Bremerton and Kitsap. Said it would likely take a few months, but then they'd reach back out with the, with what they found out. Um, so just want to keep you on the loop on that as I I hear more, I'll let you know.
Thank you, uh Denise.
Wow, that, thank you, Jeff, you know, uh gosh, Jeff and I even met for coffee earlier and I, I didn't hear about this. This is because he had so many other things uh uh to talk about with me, but um, this is exciting. And when UW gets involved in doing uh some kind of research, you know, and analyzation, I love it when we use universities to do that, you know, it's, it's, that's fabulous. Looking forward to seeing that data. Um, so excited, excited, excited about that, especially when I'm around women's reproductive healthcare. Uh, so my ears lit up when you talked about multi-care and their services and maternal uh health. Um, because you know, that's kind of connected to that. Um, anyway, uh the only other thing that I wanted to make sure that I said somewhat, somewhat publicly, I mean, this is a study session, but um I want to just voice my own support for President Goodnow uh in uh this latest round uh of harassment that he's been dealing with for a long time and uh targeting someone like that. Uh, I remember I worked in the domestic violence field for a long time and uh, you know, the stalking, the harassment, that kind of stuff is, is very arduous. And uh I'm really sorry that it's happening. Uh, and I wish there was more we can do. I certainly understand uh that we can't do more, but I just wanted to say, I, you know, I wish there was more we could do, President Goodnow, I really do. Um, and I just wanted to extend that somewhat publicly.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to echo that as well. I I I think you've been doing an excellent job as president. That's why I voted for you. I do not find you to be censoring at all. I think you strike a really good balance between
Okay, that's enough.
All right, uh, anyhow, uh, the second one though, that I did want to tell people is um you know, I let Lori and Christine know, but I'm going to be out of the country starting Saturday, so um Saturday through I believe the twenty-third of August is when I return. Um, so if I'm not getting back to people, that is the reason. Just wanted to let you all know. Thanks a lot.
Okay, yeah, actually, it might just be a good time to remind folks that if you're leaving the city of Bremerton for more than thirty days, you need to basically get permission from the council. So we kind of learned that a little, little weird, difficult way, but anyways. Um, all right, well, uh, thanks, everybody for your input. I don't know what you're gonna do with all this extra time this evening, uh but um the next meeting will be held remotely on Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two at five thirty PM. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Oh, thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Arrivederci.